We have people waiting already.
Howdy, neighbors.
Hey, David.
Good to see everyone.
Got a lot of people on already.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know, I teach a class at NYU Journalism, and my class is going to be here for the first hour. So you'll see an extra group of people. They're not here to bring concerns, but just to listen to some of the other.
That's fine. Thank you. I'm glad they're here. So we're going to ask, I'll repeat this later, but we're going to ask everyone who wants to speak to type your name into the chatroom and your organization, and we'll call on people from the chatroom. Just wait a few more minutes. So I guess David's going to be the first person speaking.
And it looks like the only person right now.
Well, and there's there's 19 participants. Well, some are board members.
I need company.
I'm sure there will be other people speaking. Okay, we're ready to start, Alicia. Or maybe we should actually just wait for a few more. If 29 people and two people, so two people signed up to speak. So I'm hoping more people will sign up to speak. We'll explain the process after Alicia starts the meeting. Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight to give input on the important needs of the community. And I want to introduce myself. My name is Alicia Lewis Coleman. I am the Chair of Community Board Three. Oh, sorry. Sorry, everyone. Sorry, everyone. Technicals. And I would like to introduce our chairs. Are there any chairs now currently present? See who's here. Susan, who's here?
Trevor is here. Alex is here.
Okay, so chairs, can you introduce yourselves and the committees that you represent?
I will. Hi, I'm Alexandra Benatano. I'm the Chair of the SLA DCA Licensing Committee.
No, Trevor's on.
I'll go next. Trevor Holland, Chair of Parks and Waterfront for ZNC for CB3.
Lynda Jones, Chair of Landmark and Vice Chair of Land Use.
Hi, I'm Anisha Stephen. I'm the Chair of Economic Development.
My name is Carolyn Reddick, Chair of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Committee and Vice Chair of the Landmarks Committee.
Looks like that's it. Okay. So I cannot hear. I'm hearing reverb. Okay, so I'm muted up here as far as that's concerned. I can't hear anything, so you have to talk to me, okay? All right, everyone, so I would like to have our district manager Susan Stedt to go over the Zoom rules and explain what budget priorities are. Okay, thank you. Sorry for feedback. I did hear you post which.
I think we have to, everyone has to turn the mute button on, and only the person speaking should have their unmuted, and that way it won't echo.
Okay, so if everyone will mute themselves unless they're speaking. That's much better. Thank you very much. So first of all, there's a lot of people here, so that's really good, and I'm hoping most people want to speak. If you will put your name and your organization, if there is one, in the chatroom, and then we will call on people from the chatroom. So please sign up if you want to speak. Please sign up with your name. Each person will get two minutes to speak. And just a word about budget priorities. So once a year, the Community Board votes on budget priorities in October. What's important and how we want agencies to spend money in our community. And these are funding that's within agencies. For instance, parks within HPD, within buildings, that sort of thing. And each committee will vote on priorities that are within the jurisdiction of their committee. Like Land Use will vote on HPD priorities and Department of Building priorities. Parks will clearly vote on parks and some EDC priorities. Transportation will vote on DOT. So we're hearing all of them tonight, and then they will go to the committees. There are expense priorities and capital priorities. Expense priorities are programming and staff, such as more social workers at schools would be an expense priority. More nurses at naturally occurring retirement communities would be an expense priority. A capital priority would be to reconstruct a playground. A lot of our capital priorities are in parks. A new school would also be a capital priority. That's one that's been on our list for a long time. If a program is not on an agency funding line, we can't, they will not give way to a priority. For instance, if we vote on a program that's funded by city council, they won't consider that. We will get an answer back from the agency saying this is not an agency funding. This is city council. So what we're voting on tonight are funding lines that would be within agencies. So I know that gets confusing sometimes. And if people have questions during, while they're speaking, or if they want to ask any questions, we'll be happy to answer. And that's it. Alicia, do you want me to start giving you names? Or did you want to say, did you want to say anything more? Can everyone hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. I muted myself. Susan, mute yourself for a minute. Let me just say that.
I'm going to. I'm just looking to how to do it.
Okay, so I just want to give everyone a heads up. I know many of you have come out tonight in support of funding for CHADAS. I myself am a big fan of CHADAS. I was there when I was a kid. And so, but this is a privately owned property, and we have no agency that represents them. So we can have, we can have this right now on our budget priorities listing. But if you would like the city to take an action on this particular item that I know that many of you have come out to speak about, especially you, Harry. Thank you so much. But if you'd like us to take an action on, maybe perhaps a resolution could be made or letters to the mayor's office, something of that support at this moment. But that cannot be on our budget priorities because there's no agency representing them individually, okay? If you want to inbox me or talk to me further, we can do that, okay? Is the mayor's office an agency?
No.
No. Okay, so let's get started. Who are we starting with, Susan?
The first is David Garza.
David Garza, representing.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is David Garza from Henry Street Settlement. I know many of you as neighbors, friends, collaborators, supporters, partners in lots of different aspects of the work. I'm grateful for the opportunity to present here tonight and to help identify and frame out budget priorities for this budget cycle. I think it goes without saying that this time is unprecedented and not consistent with normal asks, where we might be asking for more in some cases or modified. Largely, what we are hoping to identify areas that need to be protected with our perspective on this pandemic is that it is a kind of a triathlon of sorts, with the public health and safety being kind of the first element of it. And as we enter the second element of it, which we consider to be the economic trauma and triage that will essentially last indefinitely. It could last up to the next couple of years or more. And then the third phase would be any kind of recovery and rebuild. So we are, from our vantage point, clearly between Phase One and Phase Two. And we are starting to see economic insecurity, food insecurity, mental health instability, housing instability all begin to deepen at very disconcerting levels from the human service perspective. Henry Street has done its best to pivot, and a couple of notable pivots that we've made. We've delivered about 400,000 meals to date to both people residing in our shelters and the community writ large. We've given out about $300,000 worth of emergency cash assistance. We have made about 7,000 wellness calls to seniors through our own team and volunteers. And we've received about 1,000 calls to our helpline and tried to attach people to desperately needed services. But I know tonight's meeting is on the budget priorities, and so I have a relatively compact list. And in most areas, it's about protecting or advocating that the city agency either protect or sustain or increase because of the evolving and changing needs. And so I'll just itemize them quickly and then open it up to any kind of questions or where additional information might be helpful. The first one, and it's ironic because it doesn't necessarily fall into any specific city agency, but right now remarkably, it's with the Department of Sanitation. It started with the Department for the Aging, and this is food. We are seeing very directly in every single food effort we have, and we have number, we have home-delivered pantry, we have Meals on Wheels, we have a Lower East Side mobile market, and we do some grab and go. We did a grab and go today at 466 Grand Street, and the line was literally around two sides of the block. The need is deepening and increasing. And really, food as a priority has not been managed very well. There have been noble efforts, but I think the advocacy, and I don't even know where to put this, either Department of Sanitation to expand the RFP opportunity that they just had out, which opened and closed. Like, we applied. I'm not even sure who the vendors that were picked were or what the Lower East Side is going to benefit. But right now, the prevailing agency is the Department of Sanitation. I do think there's some capacity to advocate to the Department for the Aging to either expand the volume of meals or the cost reimbursement per meal so that the agencies that are doing this work can expand their efforts to address food insecurity in the community. So food insecurity, even though it doesn't have a traditionally formal home in a city agency, is the highest on the list. Second, just because of the vulnerability of the population, I would identify senior centers and senior funding, whether it be NORC and the Senior Center. So that's Department for the Aging. What we're facing right now is some indecision about how to bring senior center services back online. Our experience tells us that the seniors really need and would benefit from increased socially distant public health responsible in-person programming or at least one-on-one visits. And to do that, that would require funding and require some flexibility in contracting structure. So that's another advocacy point. You know, right now, we're using private resources to deploy tech help to seniors and to help them navigate other. You know, their connectivity to services depends on their ability to navigate certain tech tools. And so we've privately resourced what we call CCRT, Community COVID Response Team, where we're deploying people to help seniors navigate their tech. But we are working a little outside of the lines there, but we know that it's needed. So number two would be senior funding, either pick it. DIFTA for the senior centers, DIFTA for NORCs, DIFTA for Meals on Wheels. It's growing and it's deepening, so that would be number two. Three and four, there are two program areas that are emerging as vulnerable or at least decreased. The first is early childhood education, where the Lower East Side has seen the decreased number of slots when the programming transitioned from ACS to the DOE. And so that's an area, we're actually having a Lower East Side, a group called ALICE, the Association of Lower East Side Settlements, is meeting Friday to talk about this issue because we've all experienced a decreased number of slots. So that's number one in the educational youth category. And the second is funding for middle school success centers, which at a point in time was a pilot that it looks like the funding is vulnerable or the decisions on it have not yet been finalized. But it emerges because of the city's open choice for high schools as a really necessary ingredient to help put students on a path toward picking the right high school, which could dictate a lot of the subsequent educational attainment that they achieve in high school and beyond. So middle school success centers would be the second piece of the youth priorities. Third, and this isn't necessarily a budget priority. This is, it's the continuation of telehealth for both our mental health and behavioral health patients and for primary care as well. That because of the pandemic, it's obvious that there's an exceptional benefit to telehealth visits. We've actually had an uptick in behavioral health appointment attendance because of telehealth. And I think Danny's on from the Tonsis, and maybe he can speak to that later in his programming. But district-wide, the maintenance of telehealth and the funding to keep it in place would be very beneficial. Next is workforce funding. The city has largely become paralyzed on workforce funding because of the fact that there is limited sightlines to the labor markets that are going to open up. And so workforce funding traditionally is a program area where it's pay-for-play. Like, organizations like ours, we get paid by each placement. And in the absence of either rapid or sustained attachment to the labor market, the city remains kind of flat-footed about how to roll out programs or training. And I won't talk about a city council program, which has already experienced some cuts because, as Susan described, that's beyond the scope. But what I will mention, and it directly impacts our work on the Lower East Side, is a decision or a determination made on a program called Jobs Plus. It's a program that serves residents of public housing, and it helps not only connect them to employment but also to a number of supplemental services, whether it be adult basic education or financial education or eviction prevention. And therein lies the plus, and social work support. And so that would be HRA, traditional HRA, or the Department of Social Services would be the agency attached to that. And then when I was canvassing for information, these final two items don't necessarily attach entirely to agencies, and so I apologize for that. But one is support and funding for flu shots, which I guess we could land in Department of Health and Mental Health, DOHMH, because it looks like that programming, just because of all that's going on, is not prioritized or stabilized yet. And it's very important and probably particularly so based on the fact that we're still in the middle of a pandemic response. And I know there's mixed feelings about vaccination in general, but it's a really important resource and particularly for vulnerable populations. And so we believe that it's primary to have those offerings for those that would benefit. And then the final category that I'll mention is the arts. I think it's no secret that Henry Street is a strong supporter of the arts and a player in that field. So clearly, I know that CHADAS might come up, and we would fully get behind that if we could support. But what is directly related to agency funding would be CASA funding that schools get to utilize artists. We've had, we've had success with some remote arts provisions. We're actually opening our fall season on this Saturday at the Abrams Art Center at noon, where we are going to do our best to provide socially distant art programming. And I know throughout the neighborhood, we don't want to see that funding with or away, whether it's in the form of CASAs or otherwise. And so I would let that be my last item in the spirit of sharing time and sharing the ability to ask questions. So I'll stop there, and if anyone needs your comment, thank you all.
Thank you. I think we've captured it all, but I just want to make one comment based on something you said. I forgot to let people know that the funding we're voting on is the upcoming fiscal year, which will start next July. And as you mentioned, it would be the next phase of many things. Okay, so I don't know if any of the chairs had any questions. If not, we'll go to the next person.
I have a comment, if I could. I raised my hand, but that's difficult. I would just like, David, to congratulate you on receiving a very wonderful award for preservation from the New York Landmarks Conservancy, where this award honors the excellence in preservation. It's their highest award, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, Lynda. And it's for the firehouse on Henry Street, which is now the Dale Jones Birch Neighborhood Resource Center. The programming that will be housed there will be eviction prevention, health insurance access, food stamp access, social work and counseling, a parent's center. And in the interim, we've been using it as a major hub for food distribution and PPE distribution. And the Community Board was a key partner, Susan specifically, and others, at the time when we went into pursuit of the firehouse many years ago. It was almost, it's probably at least a decade in the works. I think we're on year 12 of, more, maybe. But we thank you for that acknowledgement, and we thank you for the partnership to help make it happen. It's a real asset. So thank you.
So again, I'll ask everyone to mute themselves until they're ready to speak. The next speaker is Ian David Knife.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm a local artist from New York City. And I'm part of a group of artists that is trying to figure out a way not to create a living environment for artists in the Lower East Side, in each village. Because a lot of the artists are exiting the city because of rent and high prices. So I've been working with the local community gardens and still trying to, until coronavirus got in the way, is to give artists the residence, studio space with inside the community gardens, which in turn gives the artists a place where they can work from, and they're not trying to pay too rent for a home, which is really expensive. I know of that for myself. So the idea of a CHADAS and a functioning CHADAS also works hand in hand with that same idea where the local artists kind of have more incentive to want to live in the neighborhood and kind of give towards educating, educating and giving to the community in exchange of a flowing relationship with the actual CHADAS once it gets back put together. So I'm in support of this, and a lot of my artist friends are also in support of this. And we're willing to work with different ways, different ways with the groups of artists that we have right now that will be able to help with whatever strategies you come up with in terms of trying to get the place restored back to a community center.
Thank you. Waiting to see if any of the chairs, committee chairs, had a question. Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker is Trevor Holland.
I'm going to have to take off my hat as the Chair of Parks and Waterfront for CB3 and just speak as a resident. I'm reading a compilation of some of the notes that we've taken for the area known as Pier 35 and the waterfront esplanade that connects to it. The biggest issue we have is there's no bathroom. You know, when you build a park, typically you have some place for people to go. The Pier and Waterfront have become extremely popular with thousands of people visiting this summer, especially due to the pandemic. Folks get there, they stay two or three hours, they bring their kids, and they realize there's nowhere to go to the bathroom. The stretch extends from the Brooklyn Bridge all the way up and beyond Pier 42. There's no retail in the area, so there's not even a place where you could sneak in and go to the bathroom. So what folks are doing is knocking on local doors and also using the newly planted beds for the bathrooms in both number ones and number twos. And most of this is in public. It's unfortunate. The original plan called for a bathroom in the area, and that was taken out. I think it's important to note that this is also a low-income neighborhood just further south at Brooklyn Bridge. At Pier 15 and Pier 17, there are multiple bathrooms. Further north at Pier 42, Corlesoak and what will be the new East River Park, there will be bathrooms. But yet, there's nothing here. What some of the local residents have actually done during this pandemic is fund money for a porta potty. And I mean, the porta potty is not the nicest thing, but when you have to go, you'll use it. So my request is that, I mean, we're talking about cleanliness, safety, healthy. It's a very simple thing, and it's just a bathroom, even if it's a temporary structure, just so people can be able to relieve themselves. Thank you. I'm actually talking to myself, so I'll take notes about what I just said.
Okay, please remember. So do you have any questions for yourself? Next speaker, next speaker is Laura Sewell.
Hello, everyone. I heard Alicia's announcement at the beginning that because this isn't an agency-directed request that we really can't include funding for reacquiring CHADAS El Bohio in this process. But over the summer, people have repeatedly been breaking into the building, mostly youth, kids, and getting into some mischief, some serious, some just hanging out. It just demonstrates the need for a community center for productive activities for our youth, which is in short supply, especially during the pandemic. They just really have nowhere to go. So I am very interested in pursuing some other some other action on the part of the Community Board to just an update on what's going on right now, what we're experiencing, and that the need is ever greater than it has been before. I have two other small things. One is we have the Lowi Saida Open Streets Community Coalition has been using their own funds to create, maintain, and repair the barricades on the Avenue B Open Street. If there is any way that we could get a small amount of funding for that, that would be wonderful. We need better signage and just to replace what gets damaged as time goes on. And last but not least, this may seem like a fluff item in such a bare-bones year. this may seem like a fluff item in such a bare bones year, but I have had several residents ask me about lampposts, period-style lampposts for the area around Tompkins Square Park, for the historic district on East 10th Street and the proposed historic district on Avenue B. And so I'm just interested in, I believe that's a capital project, how we would pursue that, and what sort of support you need from residents to maybe move that forward in the future. I just wanted to pass along the comments. Thanks so much.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Harry Bubbins. I'm here on behalf of Village Preservation, formerly Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. And I was looking at the previous budget priorities on the website, which is very helpful for fiscal year 2020. I note that CHARUS was a fiscal priority, 605 East 9th Street, 350 East 10th Street. According to the budget priorities for that year under the Cultural and Other Community Facilities and Programming section, the budget priority for fiscal year 2020 stated, "City Hall moved forward with the 2017 stated interest in reacquiring the CHARUS El Bohio nonprofit community and cultural center." That probably would be designated through the Department of Cultural Affairs. And so we are speaking to reiterate that previously voiced support by the board as a budget priority and to give an important update, which would probably be through the Department of Buildings. The building, as the board knows, thanks to its recent wonderful resolution demanding action from the city, people have been accessing the building and vandalizing the building.
One minute.
And causing damage to the building, so much so that an emergency vacuage order is in effect. We also, besides the previous budget priority, reiterating that it be returned as a community center with programming, that the city secure the property, that this is a budget priority for the Department of Buildings to go in and secure the property as they have the authority to do, and repair the building because it's exposed to the elements. There have been discovered cracks, and it is a potential danger to the neighborhood. That is what I have to say. And those are, I think, the mechanisms that it could be a updated budget priority this year for the board. Thank you.
Is Fanny up there? Okay.
I was gonna, I was gonna say something real quick. I just forgot. Looking at the history about the, the Lower East Side and the settlement, the New Amsterdam Settlement, I don't think there's any kind of, of identifier or any kind of placard that I know of that kind of, that, that speaks of this being the first freed slave settlements in the United States. I think that, that's something that's important for us to be able to, to have and let people understand the significance of, of the neighborhood we live in and the history. Just, sorry, just a thought that I had.
Fanny, are you still there?
There's a Fanny on the list.
She's, she's there. She's not being heard. I don't know why she isn't muted. We can't hear you, Fanny. She's not muted.
I know she isn't.
Fanny.
Can't hear her.
Fanny, we're gonna come back to you. There's something.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So my name's Fanny, and last year I started the group Friends of Montgomery Triangle Park for the little triangular park located on the corner of East Broadway and Montgomery Street. We had our first event last October. It involved planting bulbs and some sort of cleaning. And we had a good turnout where between 15 to 20 people showed up. And we had a lot of support from the people in the neighborhood. They stopped by and gave their support. The park bloomed really nice this past spring. And we wanted to do an event this past April, but unfortunately COVID-19 prevented us from doing that. So we are having our next event in October, and it will involve painting the benches and doing some planting. We were also awarded a grant from Partnership for Parks for our upcoming events. And tonight, I'm here to advocate funding for this little triangle park. And it's just that it's been neglected for so long. And two of the priorities that we, two, two of the things that we urgently need right now is, one is benches. There's only four benches in that little park right now, and there's plenty of room for more benches. The second item is that, which is also our main problem with the park, is that we have a huge rat problem in the park. It's continuous. They do dry ice there, and then the park, and then the rats come back. And the cause of that is because we have these regular food dumpsters. And I'm not talking about scraps, like leftovers or anything. We're talking about, like, literally, I've seen chicken dinners, I've seen bread, like, bagfuls, bagfuls of bread thrown in there. And we have a regular person that comes by and dump industrial-sized bags of bird seed there. I mean, I could send you pictures of it, but, so that keeps bringing the rats back. And that is the main complaint that I get when I hear people talking. They tell me, no matter what you do, it, the rat's gonna come back. So I'm proposing to have funding for some sort of, like, fence, a low fence, a temporary fence for that, so it would separate the planting areas and also protect the plantings that we do. Because right now, it's completely open, where, you know, dog owners let their dogs run around. So some sort of, like, a barrier to separate it. It's just to let people know that this area is protected. This little, this little park is significant, and it's important.
Alicia, she can't see your time thing.
One, for the pandemic, you know, we need as much open space as we do. And second, you know, East River Park is right by there. And, you know, due to, it's gonna close soon next year, so we need as much green space as we do. And this little area has a lot of potential, is in a great location, and I hope that you find some, something in the budget for this little park. Thank you.
So if I could just ask you to, or we'll have your information. Those are things that can be done, agencies can accommodate with an existing budget. So those are the kind of problems that they should be addressing every day.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I just need, I'm asking for money for a fence. And, I mean, I could even, a temporary fence, but, you know, they say that it's a capital, it's a capital item, benches and fence like that.
But, but the rat, the, dealing with the rats is something that they do have funding.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying, like, if we had a fence, maybe that would kind of deter the people, you know, just something, you know.
Okay. Next person.
Susan, before we go to the next person, two questions, because I saw Alicia putting up the yellow signs, but I don't, if you, on a regular computer, she's only about a quarter inch high, so it's hard to see the timer sign. Are we timing people here?
We're supposed, okay, we had announced in the beginning that people would get two minutes. And if it would, if one of the chairs could actually do the timing, it would be very helpful. Alicia's having problems of speaking on her computer.
Susan, if you make me a co-host, I'll put up that countdown clock that we have.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to find, I'll find you and do that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we can just ask folks to be mindful of the time limit for two minutes while Linda file, until Susan makes her co-host.
Okay, so in the meantime, we'll go to the next speaker, who is Carolyn Radcliffe. And Carolyn, if you could speak for two minutes.
Yes. I want to speak in support of the city of, I mean, are regaining custody of CHARS El Bohio, however they manage to do it. There is a landmarks law called demolition by neglect. And if that building doesn't fit that description, God knows what does. The city has gone after the Corn Exchange, a building on the corner of Fourth Street and Bowery, and managed to do those lawsuits and actually address those issues. I think they could do the same for 605 East 9th Street and return it to our community to serve our community. The other thing that I understand is, is that the parks of Green Thumb is being cut 40%. And I think that that issue needs to be addressed. We need Green Thumb in this community, particularly, they do a wonderful job of surfacing community gardens. If they lose that amount of staff, it will certainly impact on how community gardens are able to function and serve the community. In regards to parks, I think they need increased funding for the tree pits. Okay, I see the big sign now. So tree pits need barriers, and they need signage. So that would be really helpful if that could be included in the request to parks, that they increase the amount of money that they're allocating for that. The third thing is, is that artists and arts organizations need access to more funding. That could also be through the Department of Sanitation, the Department of Transportation that have programs, and also through the Parks Department, since DCLA is not one of the agencies that's on their budget priority list. So we would really appreciate it if those could be included. Senator Serrano yesterday said that 70%, and then another quote, was 75% of people who work, artists and people who work for arts organizations are now unemployed and don't have access to income. I think this is an issue that needs to be addressed with this community board, since we have a very large artistic community that live here.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next speaker is Julia Sin.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I'm the CEO at the Tonsus Health Center, and we've been on the Lower East Side for 50 years. So the first item that I would like to speak about is something that David Garza, who's a good colleague and strategic partner of ours, has mentioned, is in the area of telehealth. At the Tonsus Health Center, due to the COVID pandemic, we had jump-started our telehealth services, which we found was invaluable, and we know that, it's here to say. So it, it's really a Department of Health initiative to request that funding continue for those services, because many of our patients have been very happy receiving telehealth services and know that that will increase their access to care. The second thing, which we found as a result of also having telehealth services, was really the ability for us to access the patients via internet. However, we found that many of our residents here in the Lower East Side had difficulty because they had no internet services or devices, or understood how to access their healthcare through telehealth. So in that respect, I would request that there be funding that's made available to improve infrastructure, services, and needs within the community. Another area which we've identified clearly is that we want to have continued support through the Department of Health, through the Department of Aging for Behavioral Health Services. With the COVID pandemic, mental health has become even more so a major issue, and we have seen much more depression and drug use. So the ability to enhance our substance use disorder program, you know, which we have at the Tonsus, and helping the elderly with such a time of need is something we dearly believe in and, and hope to continue having more funding for. The, the other area that we want to raise a concern about is an alarming issue with the discounted drug program that patients and our health center now avail us. And right now, the Department of Health wishes to remove that funding, which is called the 340B program. And I'm bringing to the attention that this would be a major impact for all our low-income patients and for the health center who benefits from this discounted drug program entitled 340B. So thank you for that opportunity to speak.
The next speaker is Veronica Wong.
Hi, my name is Veronica Wong. I'm the new advocacy director at the University Settlement, and I'm really pleased to meet all of you. The economic health and social impacts of COVID-19 have been especially challenging for the already vulnerable communities we serve. Our budget priorities both reflect this urgent new reality and respond to existing community needs. We respectfully request the board considers the following. For our children and their families, we ask for more funding to provide essential mental health services to children and families ineligible for Medicaid services. This is ever more important, as over the past month, students and families have experienced the devastation of COVID-19, the trauma of racial injustice, and the toxic stress of systemic inequity, particularly in Black and Brown communities. We also ask for more funding to cover added, added COVID-19 expenses, such as insuring a nurse in every school, OSHA training and additional hours needed for all custodial staff, ample supplies of PPE for staff and participants, and supplies necessary for enhanced cleaning procedures, as we expect our new normal under COVID will continue for quite some time. For our youth, we ask that the city builds back the Summer Youth Employment Program to reinvest in communities and support young people. We ask that the city continues improving the Nisha community spaces where young and older people gather. We would like to thank the community board for actively supporting these improvements in Nisha spaces and ask for continued advocacy for this need. We ask that the city grows the elementary age after-school programs by increasing per-youth cost and number of slots available. Working families must have this free care and youth development for K through fifth grade students. For our older adults who are at risk of increased isolation, we ask for more technology. COVID-19 pushed community programming online, thus leaving out older adults, adults who lacked technology and internet connection. We commend the city for providing tablets to older adults living in Nisha, but many more are in need. We also ask for more money for homebound older adults. The Lower East Side has a higher proportion of adults over, over 65 than both the city and the borough. We need more flexible funding dedicated to supporting our elders to remain healthy and in their homes for as long as possible. We ask for more money for nursing homes. Our neighborhood has only one nursing home, and neighborhood families are forced to move their elders elsewhere when they need more sustained care. This places a geographic burden on the family's ability to visit their elders and costs our neighborhoods the multi-generational quality that make them special. Additionally, we ask for supporting the return of the Stanton Building to public use. Though COVID-19 renders the building less accessible in the short term, we believe that funding the Stanton Building, which is located at the north end of the Sarah D. Roosevelt Park, would be an investment in our neighborhood's future. And finally, we ask for the board to advocate that the city fulfills its commitment to indirect payments to nonprofits. By not providing these payments, the city risks a reduction of essential services to vulnerable populations, a loss of numerous jobs during an economic downturn, and the reputation of reneging on its promises. The exigencies of COVID-19 show us the need to, at minimum, sustain and ideally increase funding for low-income and immigrant communities and the organizations that serve them. Thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to take any questions.
I have one question. Veronica, you mentioned the structure at the end of Sarah D. Roosevelt Park. What was the ask for funding on that?
So this is Jennifer from University Settlement, who's here with Veronica. We've, we've been asking historically that the park be returned to community use. It's been used as citywide storage forever and a day. And we've done numerous plans with the Coalition around, and financial planning, around how much it would cost to bring it back to community use and what it could be used for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, I don't see anyone, I don't see anyone else that's signed up to speak. Is there anyone, anyone else that wants to put their name in the chat room to speak?
I know there are some folks that said they're in the waiting room and can't get in.
I just admitted everybody in the waiting room.
Okay.
Yeah, the last time, it took me about 15 minutes, but, but I think people are getting in now.
Okay, I did, yeah, I didn't, it, that's, little note didn't- Okay, I did, yeah, I didn't, that's, the little note didn't come up. Were any of those who were in the waiting room, I want to give them an opportunity, if they want to speak, to put their names in the chatroom.
Chatroom names in chatroom.
Oh, someone named Dylan put his, Dylan somebody.
Okay. Oh, yes, he said, can I add my name? Dylan, do you want to, can you want to speak now?
Hi, yes. My name is Dylan Garcia. I am the new Programs Coordinator for Lower East Side Inc., and I wanted to voice our concern for Charis Elbowio and ask that the city prioritizes the acquisition and care of Charis and give us an update, as Harry Bubbins at Bill's Preservation has said. Lower East Side Inc.'s mission is to address the systematic inequalities facing Latinx residents, and we arose out of, in the 1970s from the community that created, that was, that Charis was created out of. And it is a historically significant center for our community and the heritage of Latinx residents here, and we want to voice our concern for it to be saved. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Mauer.
Hi, everyone. I, I'm really impressed with how diversified everyone's comments are, and it's covering a wild field. I, I'm representing the elderly. I'm very concerned, because we're seeing, with visiting neighbors, I'm the executive director, and we are seeing more and more of our seniors who are homebound, these are not the seniors going to senior centers in the first place, that are not, do not have the access to technology, as has been spoken about, that really are needing connection. And as the COVID is progressing, they're crying, they're leaving messages on our answering machine and crying. The isolation is devastating. When a senior goes into the hospital, a lot of times, the hospitals will not allow people to go and visit, and that is cutting them up, cutting them off even further. And so they are asking, you know, to just die. And we've been finding that we're spending a lot of time cheering up and really doing a lot of emotional support. And we really are asking to support programs that are connecting directly with clients that are in the home, telephone reassurance, shopping support, access to friendly visitors. We've been doing things in very different ways, but we are still connecting with seniors. Our eldest is in their hundreds, all of sound mind, but all lonely, and this is not going to get easier. So thank you for, you know, listening.
Oh, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, Susan walked away. Um, Susan, can I ask a question? Or Alicia, can I ask a question?
Yes, please ask a question.
So this was for Cynthia, so you mentioned this program. Is it currently being funded by DIFTA? And what's the name of the funding streamer program? I mean, you mentioned this, this work to, like, provide these seniors with all the services in their home.
Yes. From the day of, from the beginning of the COVID, from March on, we have been open and active. We are not funded by DIFTA. We are funded through the counseling, the council's discretionary funds, which DIFTA manages. And as you know, I'm sure anyone who's dealt with DIFTA, they're not always on time getting us our discretionary funds. That's an issue with DIFTA. And it doesn't help. We do a lot of fundraising, but of course, all of our fundraising activities, which was the gala in the spring and street fairs, had to be eliminated. And you can't ask many volunteers who are unemployed right now for funding. So we really do depend on community support for our programs. Our telephone reassurance program was never our strongest program. Our strongest programs were friendly visiting and escorting. But with this pandemic, we have had to do things creatively like most, and we have had volunteers take chairs, sit in hallways, and talk to seniors with PPE, now that we've gotten them, and/or created them ourselves. Telephone reassurance has become a huge program when it really wasn't before, because good old-fashioned telephone is what all seniors are comfortable using, not necessarily the computer. Many of our clients, because we serve, 70% of our clients are over the age of 85. So we're looking at the oldest old population. Many of them have vision issues, they have dexterity issues, hearing issues. So good old-fashioned telephone and a lot of writing. We have been sending literature through the mail, cheer-up cards from students who wrote up lovely, you know, hang in there notes, make a difference, even acknowledging a birthday, even through COVID, means a lot to a senior turning 90. And when a senior comes home from the hospital, we, we send a group of volunteers separately, obviously, is as a team with distance and PPE, and covered in plastic, going to a 99-cent store, getting one of those rain bonnets, anything we can come up with to keep people safe. And then what happened is the volunteers would go and say, hang in there, cheer up, we love you, and it makes all the difference. Human connection is so important, and isolation is difficult for all of us now, but especially this particular population. And most of our seniors do not have anyone. 90% live alone, 90% do not have means, and most of them do not even have family that are nearby. So they're really dependent on someone to, from the outside world, to connect, and not just drop off some food in the lobby, but to actually bring it upstairs and chat or talk on the phone. So please continue to help support these programs, and a lot of times, seniors, when they're hidden, aren't necessarily a priority, but people forget, if we're lucky, we'll all become one, one day, and be able to live in our own homes, and safely so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, Linda Jones wanted to speak.
Yeah, just very briefly, putting on my Seward Park Conservancy hat for a moment. We have two capital priorities and one expense priority. We've, we've whittled everything down to the absolutely essential. The two capital priorities are, first of all, restoration of the Park House. The Park House is getting a little attention right now, because it's going to be used by the Lower East Side Ecology Center when they get moved out of East River Park. That's great, that Park is doing very minimal, very minimal fixes. They're not doing anything major to make it really a nice facility. We would like that house, just as SDR would like their building, returned to the community, so we would like ours returned to the community. The second capital item is the Shift Fountain. We continue to raise money for that and hope that the city can kick in some too. And that's kind of the last item on our list. It didn't get included in Parks Without Borders, and we still want it, want it restored. And beyond the expense side, I would imagine that every park in the whole community is sharing our woes. Staffing has been reduced to the bare minimum. We have one person working in Seward Park, it's a big park. She is an extremely hard worker, but just for her to be able to clean the bathrooms and empty the trash is, that's her day. And as far as really keeping the park super clean, she can't do that. And for, for some time, we've been able to keep that park pretty clean, and we'd like to continue to do so. So a plea for a little more staffing assistance for our existing parks worker. That's it.
Okay. I don't see any other speakers. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Okay, then Alicia, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, so mute yourself, Susan. Okay. So I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you all for your input. Some things I'm just very emotional about, because I know the needs of the seniors in the community. Also, with our beautiful parks, and during COVID, we've lost a lot of funding for them, and I've seen some deterioration myself. As I go to work in the morning, I watch this beautiful park across the street from me fall apart. So I'm really hoping that the city, we can get the city to reconsider some money to put back into our community. So again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you, Susan. Thank you for every board chair that was able to attend tonight. Thank you for members of the community that gave your input as well, the agencies that showed up tonight as well. Thank you so very much. Also, thank you, Anisha, for taking the minutes, and Linda, for keeping the time. See you all soon. Bye-bye.